It is four P M on February fourth, calling this meeting of the court session of the Anchorage School District order. In the room, we have member lessons, superintendent Bryant, myself, Andy Holloman as the chair, member Carl Jacobs, member Pat Higgins. And. Do we have anyone online? Member Wilson is on the line. And we are ready to begin. Starting up with board requests for information. You have should have that on a piece of paper in front of you. And we do have one particular request. That the administration felt like would take a substantial amount of resources, time to deal with. And that is down at the bottom. And the question is, does anyone on the board wish to move and prioritize that? We're joined by member Donlin.
Member Jacobs. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. A question on RFI item that I think was listed since approximately our last meeting. I'm just curious if the administration could clarify when it might be able to produce its stance on how to best funnel get to education feedback. And if I missed it in a board docs, that's totally fine. I just thought I saw them on the list of the last time I looked. Thanks.
Through the president, member Jacobs, that should be available on Friday. Pardon, there's a lot going on last week, but we can definitely put that in Friday. It's readily accessible.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Bryant.
Member Lessons.
I don't have this written out in advance. I am interested in understanding with the proposed budget cuts, the courses that we expect to be lost. At the eight comprehensive high schools, whether that is that information that we would have at this time? Is this too early in the cycle?
Mr. Gus System, would you like to speak to that?
This is probably too early in the cycle. The principals just got this last week and they're working through all the different scenarios and whatnot. As far as what they can offer for the next year. So some principals probably have that, but overall it's probably all over the place right now, especially with the high schools.
Thank you. I guess, is there a way, once that becomes universally available, hopefully in the not distant future? That the board can more granularly understand what is at stake with these proposed budget cuts? I mean, so I'm interested in understanding the classes that are going to be lost, especially in-person learning opportunities. That's why I could follow up with more detail, but I just wanted to share my curiosity and desire for a better understanding.
Yep, through the chair. Some school, some principals are waiting to see kind of how this is going, you know, what's going to be happening because it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work to be able to cut multiple, if not, you know, in some schools up to ten. Teachers out of their, out of their staffing. So that's a huge project and that what I've told them is just hold on for now, just give us a moment. Read through, look through, study this, see what it's going to do to your schools and how is, how can you actually maneuver it? That takes a while. And for me to be able to say, we'll have it in a week, I could tell you, we won't have it in a week or two. It's probably in a few weeks. And it's just a huge undertaking.
Any other information requests? Member Donald.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to know what training our coaches receive for our different sports programs. And whether a knowledge of board policy is a requirement for coaches. They actually get a copy of our sportsmanship board policy and other board policies that would directly affect how they conduct themselves in being a coach.
You're the president, we can prioritize that request member Donley for the next board connect.
Thank you. Anyone else? And I'll ask again if anyone does want to make a motion in regards to the four-year graduation data. Based on the ninth grade reading proficiency scores, the, the estimate is it would take about three staff numbers a week or so to compile that data. That's an inconsequential undertaking. Not seeing or hearing anyone who let that one slide off the list. That brings us to item C, the budget, and the administration, I think, is prepared to give us some information.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we'll go ahead and transition into our budget conversation. We'll provide a preview over the budget proposal that we've developed, as the board knows, but the community may not be aware of. This budget was developed, assuming zero revenue. So that's assuming no increases in school funding. And the other guiding principle for the administration was protecting the proportion of spending on student support services and direct instruction. So that remains the same from this budget to the next budget. But really, the, the difference would be the fact that we're budgeting over a stagnant BSA that's been flat for essentially a decade. So Mr. Ratliff and team will go over the logistics mechanics and what's at stake in this budget.
Thank you. For the record, Andy Ratliff, Chief Financial Officer. So we're going to go through our budget, which, I mean, before we start, I'll have to say that this is what I told our principals when we spoke with them on Friday. This really is the most depressing document I've ever had to prepare in my professional career. It's going to have far ranging impacts on our students, our staff, our families, the services we're able to provide, the electives, sports, whatever it is. There's just this huge impact on all of our students and staff that it's going to be felt and it's going to be. It's going to disrupt people's lives if this is how it goes through. So really just kind of wanted to couch that is, I mean, it's going to affect my children, everyone else's children that has people in the district. But right now where we're at is we have prepared our budget based on what is currently in state statute. Introducing it tonight with potential approval on the eighteenth or twenty-fifth, depending on the, how the, how the meetings go. The state is in legislative session, so they're actively debating some of the House and Senate bills that have been proposed to increase education funding. So we'll go through some of those at the end of this as well. But really, we're just in the process of making the initial draft budget and then kind of waiting and seeing what the legislature ends up doing. But this is how we got to zero. So. The headwinds we're facing really is that that base student allocation has been losing ground to inflation since at least two thousand eleven. It's increased by about half a percent since two thousand seventeen. Meanwhile, inflation since two thousand eleven, we'd have about nineteen hundred and sixty-three dollars more in a base student allocation than we do currently had it just kept pace. We use about a seven hundred dollar BSA equivalent to be able to balance out our budget for this year through our, our fund balance or our governmental equivalent of savings. In the past years, we've been able to balance the budget through either one-time funding from the state, fund balance, S R funding or budget cuts or combinations there throughout, throughout the last several years. Here's our upper limit summary. This is the total amount that our upper limit spending authority that we're going to request from the city. Pending no changes to this, it's about twenty-eight million dollars or so less than what we have the current year. About forty-three million of that's in our general fund. And with some increases in grants as we're expecting, or we've at least applied for more federal grants. However, with the grants, if we don't get them, we can't spend them. So there is contingency in there for that. We're reducing the debt service fund as it's tied to our payment schedule for bonds and our capital project fund as that's related to non-bond funded projects. The amount we just expect to spend through there. And there's some increase in student nutrition. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our senior director of O M B to go through some of the, the revenue calculations.
All right. Thank you. So this is a slide that you're familiar with. This is essentially the state foundation formula that establishes a metric by which. The factors that are in the statute are multiplied by our adjusted average daily membership to give us our final number that's multiplied by the BSA, which is the amount that's set in statute to give us our kind of the bulk of the funding that the district receives to operate. One of the things to note here is that on step two, you'll see that Anchorage is a one multiplier, which is essentially the baseline for the geographic differential in that district cost factor. And that's something that has come up several times and hasn't been reviewed in many years, simply because the, the formula was set many years ago. And it's hesitant, you know, there's hesitancy to review that, but what we know is that it costs more now to operate and to live in Anchorage and operate these kinds of programs in Anchorage than it did twenty years ago, thirty years ago.
Just like to interject, we've been joined by member Ballone.
So this is the foundation formula that's essentially kind of pencils out how the district adjusted average daily membership is multiplied by what's in statute as the base student allocation to give us a number for basic need. This also, the formula calculates what is required for the municipality to contribute for our local required effort, as well as the upper limit cap, the state cap for the discretionary amount. So this kind of just shows you the breakout of those amounts in numbers. This slide just kind of shows the different pots of our revenue that we use to operate for general fund dollars. You'll see that there's some amounts that are circled there in red. In the local revenue, you can see that's going up overall by about seventeen, eighteen million dollars. And the bulk of that really is that shift to the local required contribution. In the upper red box, you can see that the local taxes, the required portion is going up by almost five million dollars. And that we're also pulling in a fair bit of fund balance, as we've discussed with the board previously, to be able to balance the budget. In the state revenue section, you can see that there is a decrease of the foundation funding, as well as that amount that was taken out for the operating grant or the one-time supplemental funding that was used in the current year's budget to balance. So one of the things to point out for this slide is that it, it does show the cost shift from the state obligation to the local taxpayers. It shows that for. The overall contribution, the local required actually goes up by about seven and a half. And then in order to stay within the state cap, the additional local maximum goes down by about two point eight. So you can see that there's a cost shift going on there. And so that gives us a total decrease in revenue for, from our current adopted budget of about forty-three million.
Do have a request from our technology crew to be a little closer to the microphone and speak a little louder. I think we're going to go through a period of adjustment. Member Jacobs, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's a question from this previous slide, but I think it pertains to the rest of the presentation. I think I saw on the, on the breakdown of revenue that we are allocating forty-nine million dollars in fund balance to make this balance, make the budget balance, correct? Okay, it would be helpful to the extent that this is information that's readily available or was recently discussed by administration that the board could hear. If we didn't have that fund balance available, what impact we would see in the budget that's effectuated in that hypothetical? Because it's, we won't have that fund balance available to us next year. And that insight's important, given the legislature's debating a bill related to the BSA and it's increased right now. Thanks.
Sure. Yeah. So without the.
Information, can, where does the forty-nine million show up on these slides?
It's on the slide we're showing at the very top level in the preliminary budget for twenty-five, twenty-six.
General fund revenues.
Second line down, fund balance.
I see. Okay, fund balance. Got it. Thank you.
Yep. So without having that fund balance available, you would essentially be cutting forty-nine point eight million dollars more out of our budget than what we would, what we already have. So in addition to the sixty-five-ish million that we cut out, it would be another forty-nine.
Mr. Chair, can I follow? Oh, yes, go ahead. Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate that. I'm tracking that. It might, might help make things more tangible if we could understand, you know, when we get to class size increases and P T R increases or cuts to programmatic changes. To, to understand what that would be visualized. And so if there were other items considered that were left on the cutting room floor, because we got to zero and didn't have to consider it, it would be helpful for us to know whether that's today or later. At some point, the board might have to consider those cuts as well. And so any information on additional context as we go through the rest of the slides would be appreciated by me. Thanks.
Yeah, and we didn't get to a point where we were calculating out that big of a BSA increase at this point or. You know, really taking everything we could off the table or, or putting on the cut table before we got to P T R to begin with.
Member Lessons.
Thank you. I just sort of following up from that line of questioning, I think it's important to underscore that this forty-nine point eight million dollars reflects spending the choice that a super majority of the board must make to spend our fund balance down below best practice and board policy of eight percent, which would allow us to have roughly a month of operating expenses, should bad things happen, down to five percent, which gives us about less than a week of operating expenses. So we are gaining, we're leveraging another potentially twenty million dollars between a twenty-seven, twenty-eight million or a forty-seven or forty-eight million dollar spend down. And so I just, I feel like that's an important. Thing to say out loud. The district is shouldering a massive amount of additional risk. We are being asked to do something that is financially unsound. And that doesn't seem fair. It may be the best we can do by our kids, but in my opinion, that's not fair for the district to shoulder that additional financial risk. And I feel like that's a message that I'd like to make sure that people understand.
Yep. And then that would leave us about. You know, with five percent of a, based on the state's calculation of. Fund balance reserves, which is the fund balance divided into your current operating expenditures. However, of that five percent, four percent of that is going to be held for our bond debt rating reserve. So that technically would be unspendable as well. That leaves us about six million dollars, a little over six million dollars in. Unassigned fund balanced in case of emergencies, earthquake happens, school burns down, the things that have happened in the past that. Even just drops in enrollment that we're unanticipating that would result in less revenue.
You know, I've thought of, I mean, last year, I remember thinking, I remember thinking about, oh, if an earthquake were to happen, we're taking on that risk because we spent down to five percent last year. And then the one-time funds we received helped shore that fund balance up. It has struck me over the past couple of weeks that there's a different kind of earthquake that we might need to anticipate. And that could be the sudden and unexpected loss of, you know, any of the tens of million dollars of federal funds we receive. And I just wonder whether we, it would be who of us to have fund balance available in case a critical program that's currently funded by the federal government were to disappear overnight. I don't know if there are any thoughts that the administration has.
Right. And we would currently have fund balance available. This is anticipating it being spent over the next, the twelve months, starting in July first. So if we did have to make adjustments here soon for next year's budget, this money hasn't technically been spent yet.
And I'll just add for the record that we are actively monitoring the conversations around presidential executive orders and directives around funding. And at this time, we don't have any reason to believe that federal funds that are statutorily approved are at risk. But this situation evolves every day, as you can imagine.
Please continue.
Um, so one to look back to about the history of our property taxes and that required local contribution, the cost shifting that's gone on through the state. So here's a slide that shows from two thousand eleven to two thousand or F Y twenty-six, the change in state and local revenue as what's in provided in the, the governor's original proposed budget. So the required local contribution has gone up by twenty-five percent or about twenty-six million dollars. Over the last, you know, fifteen years, that's a direct dollar-for-dollar reduction in state funding that we've received. Our additional local contribution has gone up and then we've had to start supporting transportation, which is used to be a hundred percent funded by the state. Meanwhile, over that decade, you know, fifteen years, the states reduced their contribution by nineteen million dollars or so to Anchorage in terms of real dollars. This isn't inflation adjusted, this is actual dollars. And I don't, I think it's been since two thousand nine, two thousand nine or two thousand ten that we've got less than two thousand or less than three hundred million dollars from the state in aggregate. So really, as we're, for the general fund anyway. So that's kind of where we're, the, some of the headwinds that we're facing now is just that, that it just hasn't kept up with the needs of districts around the state. So as we went into FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget build, we were really looking at different functional areas in, in a whole. This chart shows how we break out broad categories of where money is spent. Direct classroom instruction has our teachers, pair professionals. Those are the ones that are in the classrooms every day with the students. And all the supplies, materials, equipment, software that goes along with those, those positions and those functions. Our student supports, counselors, nurses, librarians, professional development, we put student activities in there, curriculum, the clerical staff at school, social services. And then our operations and maintenance is really what keeps our buildings running, our maintenance workers, contracts for repair buildings, custodians, utilities, rents. And then administration is really the folks sitting around this table by and large. So it's our superintendent, school board, our, our business functions, payroll, budgets, H R, risk management, all those things that back in part of the business functions. That table at the bottom, if you can see that, that shows the, the percentage that we spent in F Y twenty-five on those categories versus F Y twenty-six. So you can see we've been reducing in every single area, kind of across the board, to be able to get to a balanced budget. And it's fairly proportional from one year to the next, the percent we spend in each one of those categories. So now we'll get into what reductions we're actually making to be able to get this budget to balance. The first is, we use the, first of all, we spent the forty-nine point eight million dollars to help preserve additional increases in P T R. So we're really trying to limit that as much as possible. We did have enrollment decline this year of well, over a thousand dollars for, or a thousand students versus what we projected. So you can see by, by area, how many teachers we were, were trimmed out of the budget just because of the enrollment declines. And we're expecting another couple hundred student decline next year. There were twelve F T E from elementary immersion programs or outside of the metric or this year that are budgeted outside of the metric for next year, we took those out. So they'll, schools with immersion programs will need to work out their schedules to be in line with the P T R metrics that we have in place. And then we increased the P T R by four across all grade levels for this year. And that result resulted in the following reductions down there. It's about a hundred and ninety-five F T E. And then we also reduced twenty-one F D E from our holdback pool, which is really these unassigned teachers that we can push out to schools when they have higher class sizes or grade level bubbles and they need support there or have trouble making a master schedule work at secondaries. So here's the snapshot of what that P T R looks like going from twenty-two in kindergarten to twenty-six for next year. And then from thirty-one and a quarter to thirty-five and a quarter at middle and high schools. For elementary staff specifically, their schools are going to look differently. In addition to the plus four P T R, we changed librarians and nurses to go to halftime at schools with less than three hundred students. We eliminated all library assistants out of elementary schools. There was only a few of them. We continued our ten percent reduction in supply funds. We eliminated the second addenda for Battle of the Books. We eliminated three level one addenda that were at each school. And then we eliminated the Ignite program that serves gifted elementary students. Then we also closed Lakewood and the Naca Valley, and those are the staff that will show up as reductions there. For middle schools, the, here's the metrics that we use to calculate out the staffing. And then the changes in staffing, you can see on the far right, two assistant principals, a counselor, and then we're adding some B P O support due to having additional relocatable buildings and more lunch periods at our, two of our larger middle schools. We're also eliminating all middle school sports. They'll have a small pot of money for some activities, but it's not, but it's in aggregate, a little over one and a half million dollars. We're trimming out of middle school sports. For high schools, we also adjusted their metrics. There are three principles that will be being reduced, two and a half counselors. All the library assistance there with the exception of one that is split between the West Roman Campus as they only have one library in between their large library. And then one office admin, as well as eliminated hockey, swimming and diving and gymnastics. Those are the three most expensive per student sports that we have in the district. The ice time and pool rentals that go along with those, that's really the, the high cost of those. We've also reduced the, or eliminated the dome lease and continued their ten percent reduction in supply funds as well.
Number Lessons.
Thank you. This is just a, a point of a clarification. In these middle and high school staff allocations, we have enroll, it says total housed. Is that this year's numbers? So for F Y twenty-five or projected forward to F Y twenty-six?
That is our projected number.
Okay. Are we sure that they match what's in the budget book?
They do now.
They do now. Okay, great.
The original, I think I showed you for high schools, did not. So that's, thank you. For alternative, they largely stayed the same. There was one principal at Family Partnership that we didn't fill this year. And it'll come out of the budget for next year. They did have a. And it'll come out of the budget for next year, uh, they did have a reduction in activities for some of those schools that do participate in middle school sports as well. Uh, here's how that all kind of shakes out as you turn that, that list into dollars. So about forty-eight and a half million dollars, three hundred and fifty-seven FTE of reductions. Um, across the kind of those broad categories of teachers, principals, counselors, librarians, library assistants. Um, there's a few other things that we were, um, added based on projected, uh, need. Uh, one of the big ones that bear at the, or, one of the big ones at the bottom, that AK Choice Virtual, um, I think we may need more. Have it, we may, under this budget, have more students taking those virtual classes too. So that's going to be necessary to offer some, uh, increased options for our students. For special services, this did change, this slide changed a little bit from, uh, when I saw the board. Or when we showed it to you, it had some contracted services employees in there. We've really just adjusted for that, so you can see the net change in service. Um, so these are actually the positions that are being, uh, coming out and not necessarily show the actual trade-off for, uh. Contracted versus full-time teacher, so this paints a better picture of what is actually going to be changing, um, and what people see as, as their experience. For department and, uh, administration changes, uh, we reduced about forty-two FTE out of there, about eight point nine million. That's really coming out of all different areas, you can expect slower response times from accounting, human resources, uh. ITs are cutting tax, we're cutting an academic senior director, some staff out of teaching and learning, um. Some custodians, the custodians are actually tied to Nanaka Valley and Lakewood closing as, um. Those are the nighttime custodians, the VPOs were shown on the other slide, but these are here. And then some maintenance costs as well as the administrative and, um, or just some of the. Stuff non, the non-FTE related things in administration, that's generally legal fees. We removed all, nearly all like food purchases, travel, soft, all sorts of software. Equipment, maintenance contracts, capital equipment, advertising, uh, professional development, any sort of, a lot of extra help. We really did go kind of line by line through a lot of these, all these departments to see what we could get out of these. Um, that wasn't just absolutely necessary to operate.
Number Jenkins? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. About this slide in particular, I think in a previous work session, we looked at a, a breakdown of, um, school districts. And a percent of their budget that was allocated to district administration, I think we compared pretty favorably on that list amongst the most efficient in the state. If we're taking these changes into account, have we done the math, does that put us, that, that, that smallest number, or have we had the bandwidth to look at that yet?
We have not, and that's actually the indirect cost rate is based on, um. Like a preceding prior year or two, the way they do it, and they have some like different calculations where they catch up actual cost of budget, and it's kind of a. Uh, it's not really something we can easily predict, and if you're going to compare it to other districts and not know what their budgets are, then that makes it even more difficult to predict. Um, we expect it to remain, uh, low though, so. I'll turn it back over to P.
All right, uh, so this slide, uh, shows our, uh, revenue for, projected revenue for transportation fund. Uh, you'll see here that that top portion, uh, shows an amount from property tra- taxes. That, that amount is helping to, uh, essentially balance this budget, um, over and above the state revenue. Uh, because there's been a deficit in this program to be able to maintain the same level of service and operations. Uh, so transportation funding used to be reimbursed a hundred percent by the state of Alaska. Um, but in or around, uh, twenty fifteen, there was that change to essentially a per student. Uh, dollar amount that was multiplied by, um, our enrollment, um, and that's set in statute in the same manner that the VSA is. That hasn't actually changed or been adjusted since, uh, around twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen either. Uh, there's no inflationary proofing or that, uh, source of revenue, um, either. And one of the things also to remember about transportation funding is that because it's driven by enrollment. Um, as the enrollment declines, that revenue also will decline. Except that our loss of enrollment isn't kind of equal, let's say, in certain areas of town or certain routes. So in order to maintain bus service to, uh, certain neighborhoods, um, it costs the same, but we get less revenue for that. There's no hold harmless provision, uh, for transportation revenue, the way that there is for, uh, foundation formula revenue for, you know, steep enrollment declines. Or consolidations or that kind of thing. Uh, so by and large, the municipality taxpayers have also picked up the tab for, uh, maintaining the service to the community. Um, and we're projecting to request approximately, um, three point eight million more. Um, to be able to maintain the same level of service. There are a few things that are coming into play for transportation specifically. Uh, one is that there's a mandate, uh, that we provide a certain level of, um. Uh, of wages, uh, it's double the Alaska minimum, uh, wage. And as you know, ballot measure one, uh, adjusted the minimum wage, uh, for Alaska, and so we have to bring our contracts up to. Uh, par with, uh, with what the law is. Um, so that does factor in as an additional cost, but transportation overall has been, um, the source of cost increases. Uh, you know, inflationary cost increases as well as other areas of service. Um, so you'll also see here that there's a little bit of a loss of the state, uh, revenue that kind of corresponds to that, uh, drop of enrollment. Um, and as well as not being able to count on an additional, uh, supplemental one-time, uh, contribution from the legislature. So you'll remember that they did appropriate about two million dollars worth of, of supplemental funds, uh, for the current year. That we are not expecting to receive again.
Member Higgins?
These estimates include additional costs with buses, because when we close the school, we have to bus around those kids to bring them to a different school, right? So that, that, that would, that's factored into this cost.
That would be factored into this cost, yes, so we have projected out some cost increases for. Um, maintaining essentially our same routes, but then also being able to, um, align all of our contracts. Including our, um, contracted services, transportation services with, uh, some of those other cost increases, so yes.
Member Jacobs? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, so regarding transportation, when the board passed its rightsizing, um, plan on twelve seventeen. Um, it directed administration to develop a plan to begin utilizing funds allocated in statute, uh, fourteen oh nine dot one oh. To begin, uh, planning for, um, how we would utilize dollars allocated to students that are in. Um, non-district, uh, brick and mortar neighborhood schools to support those programs. Is, is that something we'll see that work, something we'll see in the budget book, or is that allocating existing resources? Um, will that look like a change to the amount that we're requesting the municipality to contribute? How if it all doesn't show up in the budget book?
Um, so that wouldn't show up in the budget book quite yet, as we don't know what that repurposing plan is. Um, if we do in a revision of the budget book and there are changes, and we certainly incorporate them in there. But it really depends on, uh, the needs of those and what other funding sources might be available to help, uh, shore those up, so. We're not quite there yet, but if, um, that'll be something we'll work on.
Member Bowman?
This is not specific to transportation, but one of the questions, and I know we've addressed it before, but. One of the questions that keeps coming up, especially from the public, is how do we, how can we be in a hundred million, hundred? Over a hundred million dollar deficit? And people's property taxes just keep rising and rising and rising, and I know. We've ex- we've explained it, I think I understand it, but I think this might be a great opportunity to explain it to the public again. How is it that, you know, people, we are giving, people, uh, uh, the community is giving all they got to. In, in terms of, uh, property taxes. Yet it's just not enough, and so I think, and I know it go- goes back years, but if we can. If you can address that, if not here, somewhere else.
Right, and I'll go back to the slide that showed our change in local property taxes, so. That change and that required local contribution, that twenty-six million goes up, and it's gone up every year, it goes up along with Anchorage property values. Um, they did make some statutory changes back in the early two thousand teens that changed the calculation on it. But it's so, now every year it goes up, it'll be the percent change in property values is the exact percent change of local contribution. So as that local contribution goes up, the required piece of it, um, the state's contribution goes down dollar for dollar. So we don't have any additional money for, um, services, it's just who pays, so that cost shifting from the state to the city. And that's largely why you see that state foundation revenue going down is because the, that required long. Local contribution's been going up, uh, the other part would be the, within the recent years, adding trip, people transportation into the mix. For, uh, what we're, what we're asking local contributions for, uh, just to help maintain the same level of bus services we've had. Uh, since the state has not made any structural changes since two thousand fifteen, sixteen.
Member Higgins?
Uh, it's a good question on the local tax issue, we'll make sure I understand this correctly, because I got a little confused on that one. The, the, the local tax amount that we're allowed to get is limited. Because they want to make sure there's equitable distribution throughout the state, and we've been getting the maximum allowed by the, by the, within that. So if we don't get any additional money from the state, and if we don't get, um, uh, and, and, and so it's the same. And so the maximum amount that we can get from them doesn't change, is that correct? But, you know, because we can't increase it above disproportionate compared to other districts in the state. As I understand it, so when we get in, we have eligible for an increase in property tax, doesn't mean we're going to necessarily get it. Now, so we've got the tax on, the, the cap on the tax, local tax, property tax. Is not limited, separated between the city and the school district, it's a cap for both of them. So every year that we've had increases, that money, and when it can't go to us, it can go to the municipality of Anchorage. And they can have additional funding that way that we wouldn't be able to get. So, uh, when we see the increase go up because it's allowed, it doesn't mean it's being shared with the school district in the, in a proportional way. Is that pretty accurate?
Um, it depends on the year, uh, like this year, we'll get to a slide that shows that we've requested, because we do a separate calculation based on. That follows the city's tax cap to say, here's new construction, here's the five-year CPI and, um. Uh, I guess it's CPI and, uh, what is it? We'll get, we'll go, uh, population here, so that five-year average of CPI and population added together is what kind of makes up that tax cap growth. Um, and we are going to be this year going up to the local max if that was assigned to us. So I pulled up the slide here, it really should, kind of walks through that calculation. Um, but we pulled in the extra money we could to help support the transportation fund. So what was allowable under the local tax cap for, at least how we would calculate our portion of it if it was split equal, uh, we took up to the max for the local side.
Just going back to the growth that we've got from the state, limited compared to the cost of living and, and other things. That would tell you, well, maximum keeps going up based upon their limitation without the adjustments. But the property tax cap is allowed to go up based upon a formula, based upon property values and, and like so, uh. There's, I'm just saying that the formula for property tax increase would have provided a lot more in the last ten years than what we've been allowed to get. Because the state has limited giving us the additional money, I think that's pretty accurate.
Yeah, and for the local tax gap too, that required local contribution goes into it, so even though we're not getting more money. Um, seven and a half million dollars of that required local contribution, it goes up against the city's tax cap. Uh, but the district doesn't see that because the state takes it from us.
It's, it's, but bonds calculated into that tax capital, they would exempt from that?
It's shown in there, but it's not part of the cap, it's like an in and an out, yeah, you're right.
Okay, and then, okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Please continue.
Thank you, I, I wanted to go back to the sort of concept of twelve million dollars or almost thirteen million dollars. That, uh, we are using from local property taxes to pay for transportation. My understanding is that if statute regarding how transportation is funded was changed. And adjusted for a decade of life inflation, uh, to be accurate. Um, to reflect the true cost of transporting students, that we could use that twelve or thirteen million dollars. To put into our classroom, right?
Potentially, right now, we're, in our general fund, we're requesting up to the state max.
Okay.
Um, if there were additional state dollars that came in that would increase that local max. Then yeah, we could potentially use some of that to, um, fill that gap. But it's kind of dependent on if the general fund local tax goes up, if, if we can accommodate it within there. Because we're requesting to the state max and the general fund.
Please continue.
Um, so moving on to our food service fund. Um, we are projecting an increase of revenue and expenditures in that program as well. Um, and there's a few reasons for this, so this is kind of one of the, uh, I guess, highlights or happy points in, in the presentation. Is that, uh, food service has seen an increase in program, uh, participation kind of across the board this year. So there's been a higher level of student engagement, uh, they were able to bring in, uh, five additional sites in the current year FY twenty-five. And they are planning to bring on an additional five more sites for FY twenty-six to expand, uh, the, the lunch and breakfast programs. Uh, they also were able to, uh, hire, the, as you remember, there were some sites that they were struggling to hire a manager. To be able to, uh, provide the, the student nutrition program to fidelity in a way that would capture. Um, that federal revenue and be able to, um, provide hot meals. Uh, they were more successful this year in staffing those positions, and so that was an increase in the reimbursable meals that were, uh, brought on. And they're planning to continue that, um, they also saw a higher engagement in their breakfast program. And they're planning on bringing on more breakfast program sites in FY twenty-six, as well as some necessary meal, uh, price increases. And a, a, a pretty good adjustment as well to the adult meal price, um, that we're providing. And so there's also a higher rate of local sales that they experienced as a result of the sixth grade moving to middle school. So there was kind of a combination of factors where they're expanding, they're growing, um, and projecting a pretty good, uh, increase in revenue. To be able to sustain those programs. And here we have our projection for debt service fund. Um, it's somewhat on par, except that with a de- decrease of, uh, the local, uh, tax appropriation and state debt reimbursement. This is just kind of matching, uh, what we're projecting to happen in FY twenty-six. Uh, for a total decrease, uh, there of about seven million dollars.
You know what I'd add on there, um, we are using some fund balance in that fund to help, um, offset the necessity, the request for taxes. Fund balance typically accumulates in that fund as we either refinance bonds and get lower interest rates and lower our payments. Uh, or we project out a bond sale, and if it comes in, the interest rates come down a little bit and the payments are a little less. We accumulate some, uh, funds in that, and it's all restricted for the repayment of bonds. So after every several years, we'll come and spin that down, it's kind of a property tax relief. And that really shows up on this slide where this is our total tax request from year to year. Um, so you can see the required local contribution going up by about seven and a half million and aligning with the property values. The two point eight million reduction, the additional local ask up to the state cap. And then the increase in transportation and a decrease in debt, so overall, we're looking at about a one point three percent increase in our property tax request, uh, to the city. And then again, here's the property tax cap calculation, as it says, where it takes, it starts with the current year. And that puts in those populations, CPI averages, uh, increase, it increases by new construction. And then that really sets what your base is for how much you can request, uh, on the, on the local tax cap. So we're going to request up to the max allowed, uh, if we were to calculate it for ASD. As Member Higgins re- referenced, uh, it is just one overarching cap, so, uh, generally work with the city and make sure that the city stays under as a whole. Um, so really for the key takeaways on this, we balance the budget and up based on our known revenues. Our class sizes are going to increase and school supports are going to be diminished, sports, special programs are going to be reduced or eliminated. Uh, administrative and maintenance services will be diminished. Our flexibility for enrollment declines or even sort of increased costs, uh, that, that really changes. And our, our increased risk for our emergency reserves being depleted, holdback positions eliminated. Uh, so there's a lot of things coming out of this budget that are valuable to us and valuable to our staff and community. And our students. So, right now, like I said, the legislature is in session. There's bills out there to support education have been introduced and we're going to go through a couple of those to make. Uh, show you guys kind of what's in them. Uh, hopefully the legislature and the governor can come to an agreement and fund education appropriately. So we don't have to make these kind of draconian cuts. Um, again, our, the issue is that that. Underlying base student allocation number really hasn't been adjusted much in the last fifteen years. Um. However, if you look at even just two thousand seventeen to now, here's the state budgets for their departments um. From two thousand seventeen to twenty six. Uh, you can see a wide range of increases across theirs. Uh, the gray bars are deed separated down into two components, the K twelve support for students, which is the money that comes to districts. And then the other deed operations, which would be the folks just at the doing the work for the state. Um, so overall decrease in the total number of dollars that are. Allocated to K twelve education. And this is based on the governor's proposed budget that was submitted back in December. Um, inflation has about been about twenty five percent over that same time period. Uh, most departments have either exceeded that, some departments have doubled it, even tripled it. So as we're looking at education and it being a minus six percent, it's kind of a tough pill to swallow for us to be able to. For. Um. It really just makes it difficult. And just trying to highlight those. This is the change that needs to be made and it just hasn't kept up with other state departments. Um. An unfortunate kind of byproduct of not providing budget upfront or not having inflation proof like every other department is. When education comes down to the very end of the session and it's pitted against that and the PFD, it's either education or the PFD putting these costs in at the front end. May alleviate some of that conversation. So. Uh, that's just kind of, you saw a news story out probably today that was talking about either BSA or education. That's what it's going to come down to or BSA or PFD. So really, you know, the history of the state shows that other departments are increasing much more rapidly than uh, K twelve education. Um, so HB sixty nine, this is uh, proposed through the house. Uh, this ties our BSA increases to the preceding three years of aver- uh, average of inflation starting in twenty five, twenty six. And then adds another thousand dollars on top of that. Uh, does the same thing for twenty six and twenty seven, adding four hundred and four dollars uh. Plus the inflation thereafter. So in twenty six and twenty seven, or twenty six, you see about almost thirteen hundred dollar BSA increase. And then six ninety one and five fifty seven respectively for twenty seven and twenty eight. What that does in terms of total dollars for the district would be. Uh, see, see the columns, the first one is our adopted budget for this year, our preliminary as we proposed it. And then what our twenty six might be with HB sixty nine intact. It would allow us to add back that fifty five million dollars of cuts. Uh, preserve a lot of our savings, probably down to about the, you know, eight or nine percent mark. And then in the future, potentially allow us to either reduce class size or add high value interventions that. Um, that really could have helped our students. Uh, moreover, it really enables that long term financial and instructional planning component that we've been missing since I've worked for the district. Not having a known revenue increase or uh, what the plan is until nearly when school starts is just not conducive for long term planning. Um, it does not, this bill does not address uh, transportation though. So that's one thing we do need to, need to advocate for is having that, that uh, transportation fund shored up.
Number checkups.
Um, yeah, I think it spoke to Mr. Ratliff's comments, um, maybe on the last slide, although I don't know if it was directly related to, but I just want to be clear. That from a school district perspective, the um, the legislature's. Um, choosing to not implement a sustainable long term fiscal plan um, by default pits. The permanent fund dividend allocation with any increase in spending. Uh, which could be in this case, um, an increase to the statutory funding formula, but also is um, department increases um. The wage study that still needs to be released for the state of Alaska workforce, which shows that those folks are probably underpaid significantly. And, and so um, our position is not that those two things should be linked and I hope. Uh, and I know this board is, is choosing to advocate for a, a long term fiscal plan um. That completes the legislature's work and the group that um, the previous legislature put together. And so. Um, I just want to strongly push back um, and make sure that we're acknowledging that. Um, we deserve better than the current situation that pits those two things together and we're not asking for it. Thank you.
Right. And frankly, you'd expect to see uh, inflationary increases in these departments. If you look at seven, it's got twenty five, thirty percent increase. That's really what you'd expect to see is the con- cost of contracts, medical insurance, liability insurance. All those things increase over time and it's fairly reflective in most of the um, the state's budgets.
Member Higgins.
But I know that the legislature is not going to be able to balance the budgets long term this, no matter what they do. And I know that there was an effort here to have a session outside to try to come out with a long term fiscal plan and, and even the governor. Thought that was going to happen within the last couple of years. So I think that what we're going to get at best is a, this is what we're going to give you and this is what we hope to accomplish. And without the long term fiscal plan, they won't be able to deliver. But they're going to have a balance without coming out with a long term fiscal plan. Their, their cliff is here. Um, and so I, I, I think the legislature is aware of that. I think everybody's aware of it. And I'm, I'm not going to assume anything. I'm just going to look at what they're promising, what they're committing to. And if they commit to it, they're going to have to be the one to come out with the revenue, whether they're going to rob the permanent fund dividend, whether they're going to. Or the permanent fund itself, or whatever they're going to come out with, or they come out with a sales tax or an income tax and some other start charging the oil industry a. Competitive rate or whatever we do. I'm not going to, I don't know what the legislature is going to do. I'm not going to assume it and I'm going to assume that's their responsibility and let's see what they offer and before we wipe it out.
Member lessons and we've been joined by member Wilson in person.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify before, I know we need to move on, that uh, under this projection. That for FY twenty six, should Hasfield sixty nine uh, be adopt, be approved um, voted into uh, existence. Um, we would be able to maintain that eight percent fund balance. Level, that threshold and, and so that's an eight percent fund balance. Utilization for FY twenty six and then we'd be able, we'd be keeping that steady level of fund balance thereafter.
Uh, yeah. So, and really, if you look at that. Second line down, the estimated revenue is about ninety one million. So this, all this really does is show adding back the things. It doesn't um. Even decrease PTR. I think it just kind of gets us back to where we were. So if we did get that. Uh, those, those funds, it would, you know, we'd come back to the board and prioritize where they're at and what, what we want to do with them. So this is just kind of. An illustrative example of what could happen with them.
Member Bowman. Microplum was.
Just making sure that in our language that we are pretty specific that we could bring things back, but not that we would. Um, is it, if people are expecting that everything's coming back because we might get a, a miracle. Um, they're going to be surprised. Uh, and also I had, can I, one more? So when it comes to, there was a discussion, um, I think Monday. I think it was yesterday. These days are gone by so fast. Regarding other departments uh, doing inflation proofing. Like it, part of, part of HB sixty nine. Is, is the dealing with inflation, right? And so. In, in, in your, in our opinion, is that legal? I mean, and is that something that's commonly done? Because there's been a lot of discussion um, regarding whether or not that's even um, the state can even do it.
Um, I believe they could do it in statute where they could put the. The BSA increases and tie it to inflation, whether they fund it or not, they, that's a year to year issue. Um, but at least would be in statute of like, here's what fully funding education means. But yeah, I could, it wouldn't necessarily have to happen. And obligates future legislators.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, member Higgins.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Raised a, a good point. The legislature, one legislature can't commit the next legislature to the budget. They can cut even what we've got today if they want to. So there's no limitation on that. The only advantage we have is issue of non-election year and next year is. So that's going to make it more interesting because you've got the, you've got the legislature this year is already elected in for two years. The House and the Senate, but then next year, if they reversal what they do. At least it's an election year. This year, and, and that can make a difference. But you're right. There is no, that my understanding is very clearly, one legislature cannot commit the next legislature to any budget expenditures. Uh, unless it's actually taken out of the budget this year and, and put, and put it into a different category.
Uh, member Bowman.
On the key takeaway slides, um. You, you mentioned less flexibility for enrollment. So. I'm assuming that means if we got an influx in students next year. There's no way for us to guarantee that, that would be impacted. Is that what that means?
Um, if we got an influx in students and we've had this happen in like past years. We kind of, we went back to the school board, I think in August and said, hey, we've got all the students coming in. Can we increase our, our budget? So if that were to happen, if the increase in students is there, then yeah, we have some uh, flexibility there. We can go add revenue to it. Um, however, if we lose students and we already have the staff in place to service those. And we have to make up that revenue by using additional fund balance. That's where the risk comes in.
That's the risk. Okay.
And then kind of the other part of that is on those holdback teachers, that flexibility to be able to kind of plug those holes. Um, so if we have shifts in enrollment from one school to another and some amount. Uh, then it gets a little trickier without having those, tho- those staff in place to be able to push out.
And so this budget actually cuts out all the flexibility relative to the holdback.
We'd retain ten of the thirty one we currently have.
Please continue.
All right. So the last thing we have out there is uh, this is HB seventy six SB eighty two, and this is the. The governor's education bill that he sent over. Um. It includes four hundred and fifty dollars per K six student. As an incentive for reading proficiency. So if the student is proficient, I believe we'd get the four hundred and fifty dollars per student. Um, I haven't actually done the math to see how many students might qualify. But um. That's one thing we're get, we'll get to. Uh, charter schools would be approved by the state board uh, to be inserted into districts. Uh, transportation increase would be about a hundred and three dollars per non correspondence ADM. Um, so right now we're at four hundred and eighty one, it'd go to five hundred and eighty four dollars per student. Uh, but it also extends the moratorium of bond debt reimbursement from twenty twenty five to twenty thirty. So any new bonds wouldn't be eligible to tip for state reimbursement until then. Um, and it moves correspondence ADM and the foundation formula from. The end where they're multiplied by ninety percent up to the beginning where it would go through the special ed and CTE multipliers. As well as increasing that CT multiplier from one and a half percent to four percent. And then for Anchorage, you would provide five thousand dollar teacher recruitment retention bonuses. Um, and then for the rest, brother, I think that's right, five districts would get five thousand. There's a handful that would get ten. Another handful that'd get fifteen thousand per teacher. Um, how that looks in terms of dollars, um, I don't have the, like I said, I don't have the four hundred and fifty per student in here yet. Um, but we'd get about three point eight million in additional correspondence money and about eight point four million dollars in. New CTE uh, money based on that, on that uh. Um, on, on that metric changing. Um, about four point one million dollars in new transportation funding to off, to help alleviate some of what the taxpayers are picking up. And then it could help with their recruiting and retention efforts. So. Uh, but overall, you know, if you're to put that twelve million dollars back into the system or restore some of, some of those additions with your additional. Uh, with the additional revenue, uh, next year. We would still be looking at cutting out about fifty two million dollars or so, fifty. Little over fifty million dollars of stuff this year and then additional sixty eight million dollars next year to get to, to balance. Um, so no, long term is just kind of the one year approach, although we continue getting that twelve point two million or so and. Uh, in perpetuity is that would be in the statutes. Um, what that does though, we're kind of going to focus a little bit on the correspondence programs as well to show you how that would change. Because at this point, it could start to get a little bit inequitable between large high schools, middle schools and um, correspondence. So up there in the blue, it's the formula currently, and these are current ADMs in both scenarios, not projected. Um. The family partnership, the correspondence school um. Takes that ADM, multiplies it by ninety percent to get a basic need without intensive need students of. About five point four million or about fifty, little under fifty four hundred dollars per student. Whereas West High, as you roll them through the formula, through that school size factor, then adjusted for. Um, the special ed and CTE multipliers gets about sixty eight hundred dollars per student. Under this proposal, the family partnership would go to. Uh, one point O is a school size factor or any correspondence school, not just family. I don't want to pick on them. It's not a. It was just the largest correspondence program we had. Uh, that goes to the formula for a special ed, the twenty percent multiplier. Then I've added the four percent multiplier on CTE. You get to about throughout the formula, a little over seventy, four hundred dollars per student, per student, actual student. And then for West High, you run them back through the formula, you get to about six or almost seven thousand per student. So. Almost five hundred dollars less per student for a large comprehensive high school under this proposal than we would get for a correspondence program. Um, right now, the way the formula is written on that school size adjustment, anything less than a thousand and twenty, or a school larger than a thousand and twenty two students. Gets um, a negative or a less than one school size factor adjustment. It's just kind of, and it keeps going down, the larger the schools get. So currently Bartlett East Diamond Service, South Roaming Mears or above that, and we would get. Less money per kid for those uh, schools than we would for correspondence programs. Um. So we might be renaming some schools correspondence. Uh, I, I don't know what the. I don't, I don't know what the solution is on that, but it's.
Any chance for school board members to go correspondence rather than in person? Um. Thank you. I, I did have one quick question. The CTE multiplier. Is that a multiplier or is that a percent? It's saying one point four percent to four percent. So it's, but it's actually a factor, isn't it?
It's part of the foundation formula and we'll go up to the slide that shows it. So, and really there's no anything that says you have to spend this amount, just like the special needs twenty percent multiplier. You don't necessarily have to go back and show that you spent it all on that, those certain categories. But it is right now, it takes that uh, school size adjusted amount. Multiplies it by twenty percent in the special needs factors. And then another one and a half percent in that step four for uh, CTE, just to help districts feel provided. That one and a half goes to four percent. So that's really the structural change in that, which I'm certainly not opposed to.
Any other questions?
We are over time. I'll remind those. Member Jacob's. Yeah, I just want to revisit um, something that we touched on earlier, but I, I really want to highlight and just ask if there's any context that we can provide. So. Um, if, if the board chose not to, um, super majority of the board chose, chose not to vote to use all available fund balance to mitigate some of the risk. Um, that we're taking on by um, spending fund balance down to the minimum. What sort of reductions would administration consider and? I mean, are we talking high school sports, which I, what I think from memory is five million dollars? Are we talking about other? St- steeper reductions from something that's already in our budget book that we've looked at? Um, any insight would be helpful.
Right. We've already taken some of the sports out, so we don't have five million left in there. Um, that'd be about, that proposal, if we were to stay under the eight percent kind of board minimum. Or over that, it'd be about extra twenty million that we'd have to reduce out of the budget. But no, I mean, I don't know. At this point, it was really a struggle to get to where we're at now. Um, a lot of things on there that we didn't want to do. So the other twenty million is going to be really painful.
And, and just to put a fine point on it, and I'd like Mr. Ratliff to correct me if I'm overreaching, but I, I can't imagine a scenario where. We could avoid a massive layoff if we're trying to find that amount of money. And that's the fundamental difference between the way the budget's prepared now and what it would look like if we spent down just to eight percent. It would truly mean that folks who are in positions now would have to be told they won't have a job next year.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion from a board member that we recess into our executive session.
Move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of contracts, negotiations and personal matters.
Moved and seconded, we are recessed to executive session.